Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 15th, 2013 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the occasion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, help us tonight. Give us guidance on the decisions that we have to make for the people of Avalon, for our visitors. And please stop all the visuals from Washington DC and let's get things fixed there. Amen.
Thank you Ralph, very well put. A roll call Denise.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse.
Here.
Mayor Kennedy.
Also present.
And for the record, this governing body will be holding more than one meeting this evening and you will not be paid any additional monies.
Don't you love that? Okay, any announcements council? Announcements Ben?
None.
Right, written communications?
No written communications, but I would like to add an item to the agenda, to the consent calendar. It would be item number 10. This is for an encroachment permit for the 2013 Catalina Island Triathlon. This morning we had found out that this is proceeding and that the application would require, rather than a city manager approval, because they're closing streets, we need council approval. There's not a council meeting before the triathlon. So, under the Brown Act, we'd like to have a motion to add this to the agenda as something that came to our attention after the posting of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? Call for a vote please.
All ayes.
We have a closed session this evening?
Yes, we have a conference with legal counsel existing litigation. This is regarding Hermosa Hotel versus City of Avalon.
We will be back shortly. Okay, we've returned from closed session. Do you care to report back Scott?
No reportable action.
Okay, presentations. Sir Ben.
Yes, okay, first presentation. We have CRNR here, Mr. David Ferrian, to provide you with a presentation and a short video and I believe Denise, we have circulated paper copies of the presentation to go along with it. Are we doing it all PowerPoint tonight?
No, just off this.
Okay, so crane your neck please on our high-tech system here for... Thank you Mr. Ferrian for being here and for providing us.
High-tech. I almost see that.
Yeah, almost.
It's getting better.
Good evening. David Ferrian, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, David Ferrian with CRNR. With me tonight Dean Ruffridge, our Senior Vice President, and Cheryl Allison, our Operations Manager. We're here tonight just to give you a brief update on our transition, kind of let you know where we are, and then also we're pleased to present the documentary we did on the actual transition. So I'll talk a little bit about that as we get a little bit closer. Transition update, just real quick, truck fleet, that's entirely propane as we promised in our RFP and that's all implemented. Residential carts, you're probably starting to see those around the community. I'm going to give a little more detailed report as I get to the next slide. All the compacters that were taken out by Republic have now been replaced and are installed and operating properly at all the locations. Our office is all set up up at the MRF and operating. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking about outreach. I'll get into a little more detail in that standpoint, from that standpoint. We did submit our first report here, which was due for both July and August. We have our next one coming up in October. Permitting, just an update on that, the facility, as you know, is owned by the city, but we needed to become the operator. That transition has been completed. Where Republic was previously the operator and now CRNR is the operator. And then the propane fueling, which we're doing at Edison, we've run into a few small hiccups there with that and some of it had to do with our pressure in our tanks versus the pressure in their system. Had something to do with heat as well and it looks like we've gotten most of that resolved now and we're fueling at a certain time during the day on our route and that seems to be going well and we will be moving forward with getting our own fueling at the facility. Talk about cart deliveries. From the standpoint, as you know, carts were delivered in September and we delivered automated carts, 35 gallon customers, 194, 65 gallon customers, 215. So right around 400 customers, which we think's about 25 to 30% of the residents. There's additional requests coming in daily and we're delivering those as they come in. Again, so to the residents that are out there that may be watching, those carts are available to you and all you need to do is call and make the request and we can get them delivered to you. In addition, we'll be out Thursday night at the Fall Fest and we'll be passing out information about those as well at that event, letting people know about those. And if you have containers of your own that you want to get rid of, it's just a simple request and we'll pick those up. Outreach, and this is the area we're really starting to focus on now that most of the operational transition is done and things that we'll be doing. And annual mailing, that's something we do for all of our communities where we continue to send out educational information about the programs, you know, bulky item pickups, what goes in, what can, and so on. That'll go to residential and commercial customers. Avalon-specific website, if you go to our website now, there's a City of Avalon page, which gives you specific information about our programs. Commercial waste audit, we're going to be doing that. That's part of our contract where we can identify what customers have in their bins, which bins are at which locations and be able to develop a more specific recycling program to go along with our AB 341 compliance. And I mentioned to you about the Fall Fest, so we'll be out there for that. Our reporting, monthly, it's been submitted. We have a quarterly report due on October 31st and that's primarily made up of the tonnage we hauled, what we did with our recyclables, the diversion and information like that. And those, we went over that with Denise and Scott today and those are available if anybody wanted to take a look at those. So with that, that's just a very brief kind of where we're at. I can go ahead and go into the video presentation or I'm happy to answer any questions first before we did the video. A little bit on the video, as you know, it's been many years, I think over 30 years since there was a transition done of waste haulers in this community. So when we were awarded the contract, we decided that this would be something that we would like to document, not only for our company, but also to talk about all the great things on the island. So I'm hoping when you see this, that you're going to be impressed with the quality of it, number one. I think it does a really nice job talking about the island and what there is here and how you're so conscious about, you know, kind of the environment here and what we're doing. So again, I'm hoping tonight I have copies for everybody that I'll leave with you and one for your staff, but unless there's any questions, we'll go ahead and move on to that.
David does not embed videos in his PowerPoint.
He's coming.
I appreciate it.
The City of Avalon will be a model ecological town. Anything that would facilitate greater and clearer environmental awareness is perfectly welcome. The island's whole big real economy is turned, everything revolves around tourism.
It's a wonderful place to raise a family. It's a great place to relax, a great place for romance, kind of has everything that anybody is looking for in a half-mile diameter town.
There are definitely challenges associated with doing business on an island. Everything needs to be brought over here. All our businesses, restaurants and hotels in particular, all their supplies come from the mainland by either barge or air freight.
Good morning, we're outbound only me channel with a freight barge. We'll be southbound for Catalina.
It seemed to me that it would be a simple model to use an island like this to kind of demonstrate to the world that managing your resources and managing the environment at the same time, there's a certain level of equilibrium there that we can achieve.
One of our key challenges is what do you do with all the trash?
Eight years ago, we started our visioning process and in that process, one of the highlights and topics that we wanted to focus on was sustainability. And in doing so, the city as a, and the residents as a community, really needed a strong, stable partner in that environment. About a year ago or so, we went out to bid for the handling of our solid waste management contract. And in that process, we chose CRNR as our partner to lead us into the future, not only in the way things were being currently managed and orchestrated as a disposal company, but also seeing into the future how we could turn some of those resources into alternative fuels and some other things that we as a community do not have that expertise. We were notified by the city manager from the City of Avalon and they were out looking for prospective companies that would have an interest in providing service to the City of Avalon for their refuse and recycling needs, operation of the landfill and operation of their material recovery facility.
This particular RFP request for proposals was unique in that it was, everything involved, collection, processing at a city-owned facility, and landfilling at a city-owned facility.
We felt that the company was a really good fit for Avalon being a tight-knit community out there on an island. Everyone knows one another, they want to be able to walk right up to the people that they deal with and be able to ask questions and we found that a very comfortable fit.
Because of people's livelihoods tied to the environment in many cases, it's absolutely essential that whatever comes to this island would be an excellent fit or beyond excellent, a great fit.
Took a lot of time, a lot of effort. We look at different ways of doing things.
One of the things that we have been able to do over our history in the company is provide options for cities that are maybe outside of what they requested in the formal RFP document and give them some options that maybe fit their service levels better.
The previous vendor had been there for almost 30 years. Most all of our new contracts are alternative fuel vehicles, that being compressed natural gas or a CNG. Compressed natural gas or CNG was not available on the island, so we innovatively came up with the idea, let's make our trucks propane-powered. And propane is readily available on the island, right at the Edison plant. And so we are powering all of our vehicles that we use, all of the collection vehicles with propane.
Much quieter, much cleaner burning, and much better for the environment in Avalon. But what's unique about that truck is it didn't exist. Ultimately, what we ended up having to do was buy a truck with a gas engine and have it converted to propane. What's unique about our equipment is, is you buy a chassis from a dealership, like a Ford or a Chevy, but the back half of the truck, which is the collection piece of it, is a total, it's another manufacturer, so there's another component in putting the truck together. So not only did we have to source the actual chassis, we had to source the bodies that went on the back of them. The equipment looks great, it's brand-new, hot off the shelf. Our personnel really went out and researched what's going to be the best fit for this island. The City of Avalon is probably one of our toughest service areas, very small streets, very congested, the alleys are extremely tight, so the equipment really had to be scaled down to the size of the island. The thing that took probably the most time was actually sourcing somebody to convert the truck to propane and ultimately getting that done in advance of the truck being delivered to the barge company to ultimately be shipped to the island.
Barging the equipment out was a very well-developed plan on behalf of operations here at CRNR and they just maximized with all of their resources that barge space, they got everything over on time.
We're faced with a transition that's very different than any other transition we've done. We have 26 miles of water between us and where the equipment's actually going to be staged and go to work. There is a company, the Catalina Freight Company, that ships to the island pretty much on a daily basis. We immediately got in contact with them to understand how their process works and, again, our team did a tremendous job researching every square inch of that barge and actually created a diagram of the barge and took our equipment and assembled it so they could actually stage well in advance of anything getting to the barge on where each piece was going to sit. Because the difference in that is being able to ship everything over on two barges versus potentially three barges. We also looked at each one of the containers and identified the square footage of those and maximized that by placing computer equipment and maintenance equipment. Again, it was a tremendous job by our team to sit down and really make sure on day one we rolled with everything to meet the city's expectations.
Developing outreach material for Catalina Island was actually a very good pairing for us because they're very concerned with the environment. We had to explain what our recycling enhancements were, the programs. We've got some great outreach material, just really explaining the whole concept and what our programs are and what we're trying to achieve. The initial feedback was wonderful.
We found that there's other opportunities for CRNR in Avalon and on the island.
Ultimately, part of the Avalon 2020 vision is that we become self-sustainable without the use of fossil fuels.
We offered what we call an anaerobic digestion system. We will take their organic waste and potentially make a gas that could help create electricity or fuel the golf carts on the islands.
The anaerobic digestion plant is a fully self-contained unit, which is about the size of the semi-trailer truck and it'll sit right on the material recovery facility site next to the building and produce energy from the use of organic.
We fortunately have control of all of those resources here on this island and we intend to be a model for the rest of the world. See, this is how it can be done.
CRNR seems to have the type of mentality that we're looking for here on Catalina, looking at innovative ways to be, not just sustainable, but to look outside the box and make it a fun, exciting, interesting place for people to come, study the environment, study what mankind can do to just make this a better place for future generations. As part of our proposal, we suggested, and the city accepted, to supply the city material recovery facility with a new baler that would be about the same size bale, but have double the density, that will double the life of the Avalon landfill going forward.
This community, the City of Avalon, will be a model ecological town, a model that other communities would like to emulate.
We're very much tied to the wind, the waves, and the earth and we'd like to see it stay as beautiful as it is now for many generations to come.
We're known, of course, there as Avalon Environmental Services, which is a local name. The owner said, you know, they've got such pride in their community, we're going to change the company name to Avalon Environmental Services.
Southern California Edison provides our water, gas, and electricity. CRNR is providing us with waste management and that's a huge deal for us. So, thank you CRNR for what you're doing to help keep Catalina clean.
We've embraced our partnership with CRNR as the future steward of handling waste management on the island and we look forward to working with them certainly into the next couple of decades. The city has an opportunity with us to see a company come in, take hold of the environment, improve the environment that we operate in, and ultimately leave the island in better condition than we found it.
Nope. That wasn't planned. Right, so when you sell your services to Hawaii, do we get royalties or?
Yeah, I hope you guys are pleased with that. I have copies here, I'll give them Denise, one for each one of you and one for the staff and if you have need for additional ones, just let us know. But again, we thought it was a great opportunity to document something that hasn't happened in a very long time. Any questions?
Anyone in the audience have any questions for David? I have one question David.
Yes sir.
How is the baler compaction thing working? Are you getting the results out of that that you anticipated?
We have not yet installed the baler, so we are in the process of sourcing that currently. Per the contract, it's supposed to be installed by the end of the year. So again, we're working on that currently as one of our items that has to be completed. Okay.
Nice video even though Bob wasn't in it.
He missed his calling, don't you think?
Yeah, you're right.
Now, thank you very much and especially to everybody that did help participate in this. Very accommodating when Nick was over here doing the, you know, a lot of the shooting. So again, we really enjoyed it and it's a piece that we're proud of and I'm sure we will use in future proposals because again, your transition was unique. It's not like you do one of these every day where you're faced with some of the obstacles. We had a very short timeframe. We obviously, you know, you do have the, you know, 26 miles of water between the mainland and here, so again, we're extremely pleased to be here. We look forward to a long relationship. Thank you.
Thanks David.
Okay, I believe that we're going to flip-flop our presentations and go in the order of three and then two, so next up, if we could please have Angelica Sage from Reach for Life Air Ambulance to talk about their membership program.
Hey. Yeah, stuff. Reflex. A woman was speaking to me. How are you?
I'm doing well, how about you? Hi. I'm glad to see you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't need one. I'm on the map. There you go.
What did you say?
Thank you darling.
S76. S76, Sporsky.
Yeah, that'd be great.
See if I can mess it up, I bet I can.
Good evening, City Council members. As you can probably guess, I'm not Angelica Sage. My mom was very cruel. Angelica Sage here is of course the membership manager in the area. I'm Greg Doms, the Regional Director of Membership Sales for Reach and Air Medicare Network. And what we thought we'd do today is just kind of give an orientation and introduction to what we offer to the area and what we're doing. Obviously Reach has been around for a long time and we have served the island for some time, but we've been doing that in the past from our base in Upland with the Upland Fire Department. Last month, we opened a base in Oceanside, so we now have a base that's part of the Oceanside and part of the Fire Department there as well. But it is of course much closer to the island, so our access to the island is now from two different locations and one is quite close. So we wanted to make sure that you knew we were there and talk a little bit about what we offer as a program. So if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, we'll just give you a little bit of an overview of our company's background and what we offer. And we're going to talk about two pieces. One, the Reach Air Medical Service, which is of course the air medical transport part, and then we have a membership program. Because unfortunately, the downside to flying is always expensive and air medicine's extremely expensive and the membership program makes that a much more accessible for most folks. So talk about our mission statement a little bit, as you can see there and you've got the PowerPoint there in front of you as well. Our goal has been for some time to be available and prepared to provide the customer-oriented, high-quality patient care in a safe and effective manner. We always do what's right for the patient and that is something that we live by. Our founder, Dr. John McDonald, who's passed away a few years back, put a lot of heart and soul into this company and has created a company that has gone on for a long time with even in his absence and we continue to live that legacy that he started. So we're very proud of him and what he's begun for us with Reach. Our rotor wing program, these are the two aircraft that serve the island. One is the Upland Fire branded helicopter and the other is the one that you see at the top, the new one. They're both brand-new aircraft. The one's branded with Oceanside, they're both fully IFR, state-of-the-art, twin-engine, EC-135 helicopters. We also have fixed-wing aircraft. This, an aircraft like this is going to be stationed in Southern California beginning in January. That also is able to access the island if that's the requirement advantageous for us. So we have those three aircraft that'll be able to service the island. We respond of course to emergency scene calls as well as inter-facility transports, transports from hospitals. So obviously, being 26 miles offshore, there's no other way to get there other than the boat or the helicopter, so. Our pilots, again, we have the longest-standing IFR program in the region. Our pilots are highly trained, we are very selective in who we allow to work with us. We have a lot of coastal, Coast Guard, we call them Coasties, in our crews. They're all IFR certified, they have over 5,000 hours on average, some of our pilots have much more than that. Clinical expertise, we're really very much of a clinical organization, of course being started by Dr. McDonald. The clinical portion of what we do is very important to us. We are second to none in our clinical expertise and what we offer. We basically bring a flying ICU when we come. We have a flight nurse and a flight paramedic on every flight along with the airline transport pilot. They're both highly qualified in critical care, pre-hospital care medicine and we have a lot of testing and training that goes to that and you have to have quite a few years of experience in the field before you can fly with us, so. We are fully cane-certified and accredited as well. The other thing we do is a lot of outreach education and one of the things that we use to differentiate us from other organizations is that we get very involved in the communities we're in. One of the things that we do, and of course we're working with the Fire Department here, is we provide education not only to the community and to the hospitals, but also the emergency services. Everybody in the emergency services has to have certification every couple of years and that requires continuing education. We provide that, come out and teach classes. A lot of our, a large portion of our staff is certified as an educator, so they can give CEU education. We do that at no cost to the agencies, so especially in a situation like this where getting those credits is either going to the mainland or paying somebody to come out here, that offers a lot of value added as well and we're happy to do that for our communities. We also provide a lot of conferences. We do the Reach On Tour Trauma Conferences and Specialty Conferences. We put those on at very low cost so that medical providers can come to those and get those CEU credits as well. Additionally, we get very involved in the communities we work in. Not all programs do this, but we strongly believe that we have to become a partner in the community that we're in. So we, as a company and our employees, are always involved in things that happen in the community. We get a lot of involvement in chambers, the hospital programs, fundraisers. We become an active part of the community where we serve. Talk a little bit about the Reach membership. Our Reach membership is called Reach for Life and the benefit of the membership, as I said, unfortunately, a helicopter flight's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars and not everyone's insurance covers that 100%. In fact, it's very, very common for insurance to only cover half of that or so. So for a very reasonable amount of money each year, you can get peace of mind. If you have a membership with us and you fly on any of our aircraft, there is no out-of-pocket expense, period. You do not owe anything other than what the insurance pays. We'll accept that as payment in full. that happen in the community. We get a lot of involvement in chambers, the hospital programs, fundraisers. We become an active part of the community where we serve. Talk a little bit about the Reach membership. Our Reach membership is called Reach for Life. And the benefit of the membership, as I said, unfortunately, a helicopter flight's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars. And not everyone's insurance covers that 100%. In fact, it's very, very common for insurance to only cover half of that or so. So for a very reasonable amount of money each year, you can get peace of mind. If you have a membership with us and you fly on any of our aircraft, there is no out-of-pocket expense, period. You do not owe anything other than what the insurance pays. We'll accept that as payment in full. So, and the other thing that differs with us is we don't require that you have health insurance to be a member with our program. So if you have no health insurance, or you have somebody in your household that isn't, it doesn't matter to us. We don't ask pre-existing medical questions. We don't ask about health insurance. And we cover all members of the household, which means if somebody has a household membership, they don't have to be related to the primary member. You don't have to be a dependent or have, or be under 26 years old or anything. If you live in that household, we consider you to be a household member. So the membership covers that as well. And that includes kids that are away at college. If that's their primary household, we'll consider them as well. Again, very affordable. For $65 a year is our average membership, and it can get less than that with group discounts and a variety of other methods. We also do, as I said, discounts for groups, and we have municipal plans, and that's something that we would like to talk to the city about in the future. A municipal plan is a site plan that covers everyone within a certain geographic area. So for example, if the city of Avalon chose to do that, all the residents of the city of Avalon would be covered with a reduced-cost membership for a certain geographic area. So the island, for example, and perhaps some of the mainland would be designated as an area that if any of the citizens that resided here needed to fly with any of our programs, they'd have no out-of-pocket expense. And that would be one, one flat rate for everybody for the year. And again, it's about $15 a household rather than the 65. Then if they choose to upgrade to a full membership to cover them through our whole network, which is coast-to-coast, about 220 bases currently across the country in 28 states, it's only $35 then. Because you've already paid some of that on their behalf as a citizen of the community, then they can upgrade to a full membership for only $35. Of course, the broad geographic coverage, we've been doing the membership program longer than anybody else. The part of the Air Med Care Network, when Reach joined the Air Med Care Network in December, they became part of a network of five air ambulance providers across the country. That group of companies began membership in the United States 28 years ago. So we've been doing it longer than anybody else has, and we think we do it better than anybody else has. We're very proud to offer that and alleviate anybody's concern for the expense of flying. Obviously, you know, when we fly somebody, it's not a good day for the family. And to make matters worse, a huge bill, you know, it's a bad situation on a bad situation. So with the membership program, we seek to solve that problem. We thank you very much for your time. Look forward to more communication and involvement with your community. We're very, very happy to be working with the Fire Department and all the local events and stuff going on in the community. We're going to be involved in the chamber and work with some of the local areas to cover some of their events and be at the airshow as well with our aircraft. Any questions for anybody? Anybody want to talk to Angelica? The real Angelica?
We talked to Catalina Island Company too, and talked to them about covering their events. For people coming over, it would be as low as about $3.30 to cover each participant for that event. So they're very interested in expanding that with us also.
We're just happy to be here.
Yeah, you're just another member of the chamber. You're a lot.
Well, there you go.
Any questions about our service or the membership or any of that? Obviously, you have some supporting documentation and background there, but I'm happy to answer any questions about what we do.
So you're based in Oceanside?
Yes, sir.
That's as close. That's pretty close.
It's pretty close. We can get here in about 20 minutes. And the things that we do also to help differentiate that, we have what's called a proactive response. If somebody thinks they might need us and they launch us, we're happy to go ahead and start that direction. And a lot of times, the call-out or the situation, the dispatcher will know this sounds like it could possibly need a helicopter. If they call us, we'll start heading that way. If they get there and find out they don't need us, we turn around and go back home. Nobody has a bill. No problem. We're happy to do that. And that way, we can often cut that time down even more.
My wife had a stroke about four years ago in the Country Club, which is right up the hill from where we are. And the helicopter service that we had was a commercial service. I forgot what they call it now. But she, from the time she had the stroke until the time she was in the ER room at Long Beach Memorial was an hour and 30 minutes. Was able to get that blood clot.
Right, the TPA.
Protocol.
That's very critical.
And saved about 50% of the motion of her right side.
Yeah.
So it's really important. And having, having the helicopter service, supposedly IFR, that's, that's critical. Because, you know, with VFR, if you can't see the water, you can't fly.
Very true.
So it's a great program. I think the community ought to take a good, hard look at that because $65, some of the, some of the figures that I saw was 12, $14,000 to get from here to one of the local hospitals.
Absolutely.
I think it's even more than that.
25,000, yeah. That's a significant amount of money. Unfortunately, having a critical care flight nurse, a critical care paramedic, a helicopter, and a pilot standing by 24 hours a day is not cheap. And, you know, but with 1.3 million members across our network, we're able to do a lot of those things we described to you. One of the reasons we can do all of that community outreach and we can do that education is because of our strong member base. And we've worked really hard over the years to create that base. And people stay with us. When they become members, they are usually are members for life.
Yeah. Well, it's well worth it. $65 a year is well worth it.
Couldn't agree with you more.
So you'd be real visible. You're going to be here for the airshow at the end of the month and all that?
Yes.
Great.
We are going to come over and station ourselves.
And you're going to, you're going to station one of your birds up at the airport?
Yes, that's correct.
A lot of people go up there and talk to the pilots and kick tires and things like that.
And that gives us a three-minute response time if something does happen, even into the city, so.
Great.
We're very proud to be a partner with you and look forward to seeing a lot of you. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, next we have Mr. Marvin Jackman from Southern California Edison. Marvin?
Thanks, Ben. Mayor and Council. Again, Marvin Jackman from Edison. I am temporary trying to fill his shoes from the person you stole from Edison.
Stole?
Stole? We stole you?
That was the third one we stole.
Oh, is that right?
The third one.
Oh, nice, nice. Actually, his job did get posted last Friday. So I am filling in, trying to keep the ship afloat while they hire his permanent replacement. But in the meantime, I will be filling in his role as Public Affairs Manager for Edison. And just a little bit, I've been in this business for about 20 years. Ben and I were peers, and I actually have the Palos Verdes Peninsula Cities and some other cities in the South Bay. So I'm doing those cities as well as Long Beach and the port and Avalon. So I just wanted to introduce myself. And any issues that we have, I'll be dealing with them just as well as Ben did. So.
Maybe better.
Let's hope so.
Questions? Other than that, that's all I had.
Welcome.
Great, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks for being here, Marvin.
Appreciate it.
Okay, and the final presentation of the evening is from Catalina Choices. We're going to be talking about their Avalon, Red Ribbon Week of the Avalon Schools.
Thank you. I'm Judy Hibbs, and I'm here for Choices. Choices is citizens helping our island children and substance abuse. Choices really cares about island kids. I'd like to introduce our three new volunteer board members and have them come up and join me. Ellen Fusco. Mindy Milan. Unfortunately, Elena Machado Martine had to step out. She's a busy mom of four, but she's also going to be a new board member. And these ladies represent new energy, new resources, and new hope for Avalon's young people exposed to tobacco, drugs, and alcohol. I would also like to introduce our continuing care specialist for Choices, Rhonda Kalish, and have her come up. I'm going to have the ladies pass out some information to everybody here on the council and also in the audience. Starting Monday, October 21st, go ahead and hand things out. We've got pens. We have red ribbons because it is the 28th Annual National Red Ribbon Week, starting here on Monday, October 21st to 25th. They'll be passing out pledge cards. I have kind of a larger format of it here for you to see. We'll be asking the kids on Avalon School Campus to pledge to be drug-free, alcohol-free, tobacco-free, and lead a healthy and positive lifestyle. And the pledge card goes on to say, "I value my life and the lives of my family and friends. The best me is drug-free." It's going to be very important to see red next week. There's a lot of special events happening. Check the local newspaper. That'll be out on Thursdays and Fridays. And I can tell you that pro-skateboarder Preston Pollard will be visiting the school and also doing a clinic and meeting the kids over here at the skate park on Wednesday, October 23rd. Wednesday's another special day because it's Wear Red Day. And so all of you in the community, if you would like to support Choices, you can wear red all week long, or you can wear red especially on Wednesday. I know I will.
Okay.
We encourage you to wear your red ribbons all week. Have people ask you, "Why are you wearing a red ribbon?" The students and the teachers will be presenting different activities for the kids. And our kids really are deserving of the best. So we have much more information to share with you at a later date, but we wanted to publicize Red Ribbon Week and invite you all to support Choices. Thanks.
Thank you, Judy. Thank you.
Want to move into oral communication now?
Oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the council for any item that's not currently on our agenda, you may now come forward.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Devin, and I'm the Director of Development and Membership at the Catalina Island Museum. And it is my great pleasure to inform members of the City Council and the Avalon community that the construction has now begun on the future home of the Catalina Island Museum, the new Ada Blanch Wrigley-Shriner Building. Construction of the building will take approximately one year, and we should be open before summer of 2015. The Catalina Island Museum has never had a permanent home. In fact, 60 years ago, in 1953, when Philip K. Wrigley led the effort to, to put together a museum, he was generous enough, excuse me, generous enough to provide space for the museum on the ground level of the casino building. It's been a wonderful location for the museum with one significant limitation. The museum has never had the space to expand and acquire more exhibition space. With our new building designed by the architectural firm of Marengo Morton Architects of La Jolla, we will soon have four times the space that we have now. And our galleries will be climate-controlled and secured and be a great place to house not only our historical collection, but art collections and exhibitions and historical exhibitions from around the world. I must tell you that reaching this milestone has been a dream 10 years in the making for the museum, and it's a very exciting moment for the museum in our history. I hope that the City Council, city staff, members of the Avalon community, and all of our visitors are able to attend our groundbreaking ceremony this Saturday, November 2nd at 4:00 p.m. There will be live music, champagne, and an all-around good time. There's invitations available. We sent invitations out to our membership and as well as the Chamber of Commerce list. But we also have invitations available at the front desk of the museum. And I'll make sure to drop off invitations with Denise Raddi and the front desk of the city. But I truly hope that all of you can attend. It's going to be really great. That's all I have to say.
Great.
Thank you, Devin.
Mayor, if we don't have anyone else wishing to address the council, I know we have two department heads with brief updates this evening as well.
We have one more.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You can.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. My name is Doug Federall, Captain Avalon Sheriff's Station. Two things really quick. About two weeks ago, we opened up a tutoring center for our Youth Activities League at the sheriff's station. It's, we have a full-time tutor there. She's there every day after school from 2:00 till 7:00 at night, helping the kids with any homework issues that they may have. One of our deputies has also adjusted his schedule to provide some mentoring one of the days on Wednesday afternoon, and he'll be there for anyone. Danny Torres, most of the community knows him and loves the guy, so he's offered to help us out as well. In addition to the tutoring center that we have open every day, we have a boxing program on Mondays and Wednesdays from 4:00 in the afternoon until 6:00 in the afternoon. We also, Choices mentioned it, we did make the arrangements to have Preston Pollard come out. October 2030, he's going to be at the skate park. He's a motivational speaker, a professional skateboarder. He's going to talk to the kids during the school, delivering some positive messages. And then we've arranged through Riviera Skateboards, Justin's donated us some skateboards that we're going to give away at the skate park that afternoon, the 23rd. In addition, we've also received some other donations from Securitas Incorporated. They've given us 10 sets of skateboarding safety equipment, helmets, knee pads, elbow pads, that we're going to use for the kids so they can go out and enjoy themselves safely. In addition to those wonderful things we're doing, I'd like to introduce, in addition to our staff, since I got here, several people have expressed concerns about traffic matters, whether it's driving the wrong way on a one-way street, or excessive amplified music late at night, or just reckless driving. So I sought out and was fortunate enough to get one, I think, probably the best, most experienced traffic deputies in our department. He's worked, he's been in the department 32 years. Despite his appearance, he's actually older than I am. He's a, he's a great guy. He's worked 20 years. He's, I've been a motor cop for 20 years, so he knows traffic and sat it out. Our big emphasis, or my discussions with him, have been on public safety. We want to, you know, impact to make sure that there's no drunk driving, no reckless driving, no underage driving, all the things that are big safety issues for us. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce John Dettriville.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, it's my pleasure to come and work for you. It's definitely a privilege and an honor to be here. And I look forward to any of your concerns that you may have. Please feel free to address them directly to me, and I will see to it that your concerns are met. And I'm just super excited to be here. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
See you, Doug.
Jen? You're back.
I'm back. I do have a couple of community announcements, some exciting things. I want to reiterate that we're really excited that the Youth Athletic League is going so well through the sheriff's station. Their boxing program has been a big success, and you're still able to join if you know any youth that would like to join that. That's elementary through high school, and that's Mondays and Wednesdays at Tremont Hall. And they can just show on up at 4:00, 4:00 to 6:00. They're really flexible with kids' schedules, and it's been a really successful program. And then the upcoming skate event is going to be really good as well. That's October 23rd, Wednesday. Then, this Thursday, we have Fall Fest, one of my favorite events on the island. It's our fifth annual, and that's from 5:00 to 9:00 on Front Street. We have a bigger crowd than ever that has signed up for booths, so lots of great food, lots of games, great music, live music on Wrigley Stage. So we're really looking forward to that. Again, Front Street this Thursday, the 17th, from 5:00 to 9:00. Don't miss out. We're also concluding our paper bag mask contest for elementary and younger, and that can be dropped off at City Hall tomorrow. All the entries need to be dropped off by Wednesday, no later than 4:00, so they can be judged. They'll all be on display at the Fall Fest, and they'll receive a pumpkin as their prize. And then we have a new Halloween event this year, which is that we're doing a pumpkin carving contest. So carve your pumpkin at home. We have a youth category and an adult category. Come on out to Wrigley Stage, October 29th. That's the Tuesday before Halloween, from 5:00 to 7:00. If you don't bring your pumpkin, just come down and judge other people's pumpkins. It's a people's choice. And then we'll have local prizes for the winners. We'll also have goodies and apple cider that the community can enjoy for free while they're checking out everyone's pumpkins. That'll be really fun, right on Wrigley Stage, the Tuesday before Halloween, 5:00 to 7:00. And then I did want to give you an encouraging quick update, that we did finally receive enough backup bids that we needed, or quotes that we needed for the fencing for the skate park. And so the approval has been signed by staff for that, to move forward with that. So that payment will go through to, directly to the fencing company on the mainland, A1 Fencing. And so they can proceed ASAP with the fencing for doing the much-needed improvements over at the skate park. So we're encouraged by that progress as well. Any questions?
Awesome. Cool.
Yeah.
While you're here...
Yeah.
I find this a little bit fun, so bear with me.
Okay.
The City of Avalon has a complaint form, and then the word "complaint" is crossed out, and it's now a compliment form.
Oh, okay.
And the city received a compliment for the city's efforts in improving the skate park, sent by a local resident. It's not every day that we get a "that-a-boy" from a citizen.
Or a girl.
Yeah.
Or a girl.
Once a year.
But I do find humor in the fact that complaint is crossed out and compliment is thrown in there. So maybe if we put compliment forms available on our website, we would get more of them. Just a suggestion.
So noted.
I know you did participate in that process of improving the facility, so thank you. It's nice to get a "that-a-boy" or "girl" once in a while.
It is, yeah. And we're encouraged and excited to participate in moving forward in the cleanup and the updating over there. That'll be really good, really good to see.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
I believe we have one more update from a department head. Mr. Lopez is going to give you a brief update on the street sweeper, and he has provided some pictures to go along with his update, which should be in front of you.
Pastor Lopez, Works Director, City of Avalon. I know the public's been asking about the street sweeper, so I'm here tonight to talk about where we are with it and where we're going. I believe you all have those pictures. That's the way it sits today, in pieces. The reason being is because every time it went out, you know, every day that we used it, there was oil getting into the cooling system. So after every use, we had to give it the regular daily maintenance, and then drain the radiator, the entire cooling system, replenish it, and then also replenish the oil. But it could have been a cracked head block, so the engine was removed, and the head block proved to be in sound condition. So what it turned out to be was that sleeve, it's a cylinder sleeve, and with the piston going through there, there was a tiny pinhole, and it was forcing the water through there, which, the oil through there, which found its way into the water. At this point, we don't even know if the other three cylinders are sound, or how long those three cylinders will remain in good condition. If I... Do you have the bathtub curb?
The last one.
Yeah, if you'll see that last sentence, it says that we're well into the wear-out portion of the curb, which is true. The machine is old. Mechanics say that there's three areas of wear. First of all, the undercarriage, and that's what was totally rebuilt late in 2009, and the sweeper was put back online in spring of 2010. That's the rollers, the conveyor belt, all that stuff, and the undercarriage. Then next came the side broom motors, the hydraulic pumps, and all the other stuff, those components that make everything work, all the moving parts. Then third was the engine. The engine finally showed its age and had some problems, so the mechanics feel that once they're done putting it back together, it's going to end up going back to the undercarriage, you know, complete circle. And that being said, rust, as we all know, is an inherent problem over here. And many years ago, Charlie Bershmet pointed out that we live in a marine environment, there's salt on our streets. So when we're rolling that sweeper over the streets with the water on it, it's actually reactivating the salt and throwing it up into the undercarriage, into the unseen areas where rust can just do its thing and eat away like, you know, cancer. So in over 20 years, we've had two sweepers. The first one we got in around '91. Representatives from Elgin came over and trained myself and a couple other guys on how to operate it. We kept that sweeper for nine years. It got to the point where we were throwing good money after bad. In the end, it was so rusted out that the only salvageable part was the diesel engine. We kept the engine, cut the rest of it up, and shipped it off the island in a metal container. They then told us that City of Long Beach, other coastal communities like ours, keep their sweeper for no more than three to four years. After that, they will wear out, and you want to get a new one. So I spearheaded the purchase of this one in 2000, with the hopes that we'd be able to change it out in three to four years. Well, due to budget constraints, just like before, it gets put on the back burner. Other things come up. We need new fire engines, new motors for the harbor, et cetera. And so we never end up getting a new sweeper, so we keep it too long, and then we're faced with all these repairs. At this point, once it's all put back together, which the mechanics feel like if we lived in a perfect world and they had nothing but time for the next two weeks, they could accomplish that mission. They could get it put back together and running. But they don't know if an engine's going to go down, or a harbor boat, whatever. Other things get in the way, so public safety takes precedence. But if they can get that back running, we're going to have to be very prudent, very conservative with the way it runs, because they feel it may last only another year, once it's up and running again. So that being said, I've put together some costs. First of all, it costs almost $16,000 a year just to run it. That's for diesel, main brooms, side brooms, et cetera. That's not counting brakes or the other things that could go out on it. So that's $16,000 a year just to operate the machine. With three employees, at the cost of $32,000 a year, we can cover what we're lacking in the sweeper, the streets that the sweeper can no longer get. We'll do it with our employees, and that would cost $32,000, which is quite a bit less than, you know, the over $200,000 a new one would cost. I provided Gina with the numbers for a new one, as well as a lease program that Elgin gave us. But with the deficit, that doesn't seem possible that we're ever going to get there, at least not in the near future. So I'm recommending that we just keep going with our manual sweep-up. And we also have our small street sweeper that's going to be going out more often. Right now, we're using it on Casino Way and the Mole Walkway, et cetera, just to, you know, keep jazz tracks, people coming and going, try and keep that looking good. I think we're staying on top of it with our manual sweeping. There are other options out there for smaller sweepers that could be more efficient and more cost-friendly, and not as loud. I think there's a place for the Elgin Pelican Sweeper, but it's an awful big machine, it's awful noisy in the early hours of the morning, and that's where we get a lot of complaints from the hotel people. Their guests complain. So at least for now, I'd just like to continue with the manual sweeping that we're doing and see how the guys do getting that machine put back together. And once it is put back together, it'll probably go out as needed for special events, like for the triathlon, whatever, sweep the course, or some major spills that may occur or something. But it's in sad shape. It's old, tired. And that's about it.
So Pastor, are the guys going to rebuild the engine?
Yes, yes. The engine is being rebuilt right now. We're about $2,000 into that in parts, and it'll probably be an additional $500 to get the remaining parts that they need.
So they're going to go ahead and do all the sleeves? They're not just replacing this one sleeve, or they're going to do all of them?
I don't think they're counting on all of them.
I think if you got this thing apart and you've got it sitting on the bench, if you're going to do one, you do them all.
I'll tell the boys tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or is there a rebuild engine you can buy? Just trade that one off to get another one?
I'm not sure. It's a John Deere engine.
It's been professionally put together.
It's a really good engine. And I'm sure they've chased down that avenue.
You save a lot of time for the guys, anyway, to rebuild it.
But they can look into that.
There's already one rebuilt.
You know, they're almost there now.
Yeah, like Bob said, though, once you got it down, you might as well change the cylinders and mill the head and all the stuff that has to be done.
What did we do with the engine that came out of the other sweeper?
We just put that online. It's probably in a harbor boat or another piece of harbor equipment.
Okay. So that... All right. We've certainly done some homework to come up with some alternatives. Maybe I'd throw another suggestion the city manager's way. I know that we've had some frontline discussions with CRNR, because they do do street sweeping within other municipal contracts. Maybe it'd be appropriate now at this point to get a price from them to determine, you know, where our money's best spent.
Sure.
Yep, that'd be a great idea.
Thank you, Pastor. Anybody have any questions for Pastor?
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
And Uncle Rich Sedanya, he's always asking me, "Where's the sweeper?"
Yeah.
I remind him it's still broken.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay. Anyone else with oral communications? Okay, why don't we jump to the Avalon Hospital Board of Trustees meeting? We'll get that knocked out. We'll call Denise.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Morrow.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Chairman Ponce.
Here. Announcements? None. Written communications? Presentations, none. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to the hospital that's not on the agenda? Seeing no mad rush, consent calendar?
Yes, you have two items on the consent calendar, the Board of Trustees Actions and the Chief Executive Officer's Board Report and CFO's Report.
Anyone have questions? I'll make a motion to approve the trustees' actions and receive and file the report. Second. Call for vote.
All ayes.
General business? I believe we have none. Chair's report? I have none. Members?
I'd like to mention one thing for the community, just sort of a heads-up. We've got a hospital that's quickly wearing out. The Santa Catalina Island Company, or Bill Wrigley, allocated the Sandtrap Restaurant property, that triangular safe property, for future development of hospitals. It turns out, after discussing the potential building of a new hospital with one of the hospital consultants, he informed me that that property that's been allocated is in a floodplain. So there's some special things that have to be done before you can build in a floodplain, and I don't know what they are. But a big heads-up for everybody, there's about a $10 to $15 million project looming on the horizon to replace Avalon Municipal Hospital, because the old hospital does not satisfy the earthquake retrofit requirements that keep getting more stringent as time goes by. So that's just one more thing out there that we all need to keep in mind. We've got to have that hospital. Without it, no cruise ships. So that's my report.
Thanks, Ralph. Anyone else? Ben, where you at? Okay, we'll call the council meeting back to order. Consent calendar, Ben.
Okay, I'm going to spare you the pain of listening to me read every item on your consent calendar this evening. However, I would like to point out two things about the consent calendar, one being item number eight, the Information Technology Services Contract. I bring this item to your attention because Pat Grady from Beyond Software Solutions is with us this evening. Should you have any questions about that, he is here to answer them. Also, as the city attorney indicated at the start of the meeting, there's an additional item on the consent calendar that we added, which is the encroachment permit for the triathlon. I know that Wayne is here as well, should you have questions about that.
Excellent. Okay, there's 10 items on our consent calendar. Any member of the audience or council care to pull any of the 10 items on consent for further discussion or review? Not seeing anybody jump on that one. Anyone care to entertain a motion then for the 10 items on consent? I will make a motion for approval of all 10 items. Second. Okay, call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Okay, we do not have any general business this evening. Nothing but funny business, huh?
Yeah, only funny business. This is in advance of the next big item coming your way in November, which is the budget, so we're keeping it light until then.
Excellent. In other words, you guys are busy doing other things until we get that document prepared is the reality. All right. Do you have anything else to report, Ben?
I don't, thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm going to hand out a memo that our firm did about some recent legislation that was signed by the governor earlier this week. We are, the city officials were all required to fill out these Form 700s, which are basically financial disclosures, which provide what our potential conflicts of interest are. And the state has not only authorized those to be filed online, but they're now going to be made available for a statewide database, so that when you file these, they'll be on the state California's website for view of everywhere. So special caution on that. And then other legislation that was passed that we don't have a memo about yet is expanding the jurisdiction of the Fair Political Practices Commission for conflict of interest. Right now, it's usually the Attorney General, and they've modified the law to make it, the Fair Political Practices Commission will also have jurisdiction to go after conflict of interest cases. So a lot going on with conflict of interest and financial disclosures. I will probably, the second meeting in November, provide the council with a report of all of the legislation impacting cities. The bills are, you know, all the, the governor's got another couple weeks to sign things. We're monitoring that, and we'll be providing a summary of how that legislation could impact Avalon and other cities. So I'm looking forward to that. Or not, depending on what it is.
Sounds like a whole bunch of excuses to justify existence, right? More to do. Just playing. Okay. Counsel? Yet. Michael?
Just one announcement in that as our representatives to the Gateway Cities Council of Governments, at the last meeting, I was appointed to the Transportation Committee, and hopefully we'll work on getting our commuter miles included into Gateway Cities commuter miles.
Awesome. Including ferry commuting, yeah?
Yep. That's the plan.
Could you repeat that?
I have been appointed to the Gateway Cities Council of Governments Transportation Committee, and we, they deal with the transportation needs of the 28 cities that make up the cog, which are basically the gateway into LA. But one of the things that we've talked about is getting our commuter miles included into the nation, or into the LA County's commuter miles. So we don't have a voice on that now, so me going there will hopefully bring a voice to that, so.
Hold on. There you go, Michael.
Yeah. We're totally shutters up.
Yep. Foley?
Couple weeks ago, I got to go to the Contract Cities meetings, the Fall Seminar in Kamakila. Brought back a bunch of good stuff, except I left it in my car. So when I come back on Saturday, I'll bring it and drop it off with Ben. But some resources on, some additional grant money's available for clean beaches, clean water, clean sewers, which might help us out since we need that.
And have you announced to everybody that you're a grandpa times two again?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was a month ago.
All right. Just following up.
That's old news.
Yeah, it's old, really old.
All right. Thought that's maybe why you forgot it in the car, you were carrying other things.
No. I don't want them to touch it.
I'm good, I'm good. Ralph?
I'm okay.
Okay. Fall Fest, Fall Fest.
Did you drive?
I did.